... on case number 09-SU5. Thornton's Gas Station, property located at 110 West Devon. This is a request for a special use to permit the construction and operation of an automobile service station. I will let our economic development professionals begin this. Mr. Clicker.
Before you tonight is a special use for a proposed Thornton's automobile service station. The subject site is at the corner of Devon and Wooddale, as you're all familiar with. That is the former Ieno site. The Ieno site was previously unincorporated, was purchased, cleared, and incorporated into the city. It was also then designated it with the B2 zoning, and as such, a special use is required for an automobile service station. Other than the required special use, the proposed automobile service station and convenience store will require no zoning variations. However, it should be noted that as part of Thornton's business operations, they will be requesting a liquor license from the Liquor Commission for the sale of packaged liquor items at this location. There is one change in a site plan, which was I placed on in front of you tonight from what was submitted in the packets. Upon request from staff, the petitioner has relocated the dumpster enclosure closer to the building and taking it further away from the residential properties to the south.
Okay. Would the petitioner like to do any presentation, discuss the plans, say anything before we start asking any questions? Please, you're welcome to take the stand. And then if you wouldn't mind, once you're at the microphone, give us your name.
My name is Rick Clays. I'm the managing partner of Bluestone Petroleum Partners and the agent for Thornton's. I also happen to be the former president and CEO of the company. Been with them for over 20 years. I'll keep it short and I'll talk fast. I know it's getting late. As Ross indicated, we're looking to develop a food market and a fuel facility on the corner of Devon and Wooddale Road. You know, it's a large but prototypical station for Thornton. Thornton is one of the largest 400 privately held businesses in the United States. They own and operate 160 of these units throughout the Midwest. They take in about $2 billion a year in annual revenue. This facility alone will pump about 4.3 million gallons of fuel a year and will do about $3.3 million of non-gasoline sales a year. So it's a very high volume, high revenue, very high tax revenue generator for the city, and they're looking forward to coming to town. We made some modifications to the plan based on some input we got from the neighbors in the Bristol Farm subdivision, is that right?
Bristol Park.
And also, as Ross indicated, we relocated the dumpster from the ZBA meeting to accommodate a request to relocate the dumpster. But those are the only changes we've made since the ZBA meeting.
Can I ask you to repeat those numbers?
4.3 million gallons of gas, of fuel, so both gas and auto diesel. And 3.3 million in non-gasoline revenue. So that's, you know, food and groceries, cigarettes, non-gas, non-fuel.
Thank you.
So, and as everybody knows, while there's 4.3 million gallons of fuel a year, the revenue generated from that, when we do our projections, we've been projecting fuel at $2.50 a gallon. So our projected sales for this location are north of $14 million a year. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've yet to find somebody that can generate as much volume and as much tax revenue on a one-acre site as a Thornton station. They just, we'll do double the volume of the BP across the street.
Well, as long as we are talking sales and revenue, I think there's a question on everybody's mind. We've heard that this project may be contingent on some kind of a financial incentive from the city. And it's not on the agenda tonight to pick that apart, but I think we're looking for definitive yes or no. Is that something that your organization will be looking for to make this happen?
Yes, it will. And if I could just give you a minute of background on that. You know, it's not typical that when we go into a prospective trade area and an opportunity like this, that we are looking for economic incentives from the village. You know, obviously, given the current economic times where, you know, it's just increasingly difficult, our costs are escalating. As I indicated, I think at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, our investment exclusive of land costs in this facility will be $2.6 million, just for improvements that does not include land cost. When we came to the gullows almost a year ago and started negotiating for the corner, it was just simply a case where the developer has a very high basis in the land based on what he had to pay for it, some remediation costs in the development of infrastructure, and what we can afford to pay. Thornton has yet to pay more than $1 million for a location in the Chicago area. We can get comfortable in this location, you know, in about $1 million of land cost. And there was such a delta, you know, such a difference between what the gullows had as a basis in the land, you know, excluding any developer profit, which they, you know, should be entitled to, and what we could afford to pay. It was just, it was a great distance. So we negotiated over the course of six or eight months, and we came up with this idea of they would bend a little bit, we would bend a little bit. We structured a long-term lease. It's a 60-year lease on the property. And we came up with the idea of perhaps the village would entertain the notion of giving us a partial tax, retail sales tax incentive to help close the gap. And what we were trying to develop was a win-win situation for everybody, that Thornton gets to add a unit in what we think is a very dynamic and very good location, albeit on a piece of property that we simply cannot afford, you know, under the kind of the straight-up circumstances. It gives the gullows an opportunity to complete that development and finish it off and at least get, you know, a modest return on their investment in that property. And, you know, to be fair to the staff, we just submitted a proposal earlier today that, you know, I think they've gotten a chance to look at, but not really got a chance to digest or respond to. So what we were hoping to do tonight is make the presentation to you, answer any other questions but for what the partial rebate might be, and ask you to consider a recommendation of approval contingent on us getting to an agreement with the staff prior to the full vote for the board.
Okay. I like that plan. But before we get into the questions of the specific physical project, does Mr. Douthwait want to add anything to the last three minutes of conversation, or are you good with what was said? Okay. Does anybody have a question? Actually, Alderman Eugene Wesley was first.
I have a couple of questions. What was the change that you made for Bristol Park besides the dumpster? What was the other change that I?
They asked for an opening in the fence along the southern property line to allow their residents to essentially cut through and walk to the convenience store without having to walk along Wooddale Road and walk essentially around the development. So we included a small section of sidewalk midway on the southern property line to make it, you know, safe and convenient for those residents to, you know, walk up to the, they're going to be our best customers, so we're looking to accommodate them in any way we can.
May I? I have two more, man. The other question, did you, before you came here tonight, did you reach agreement with Household Finance in agreement on, in the Planning and Zoning Board meeting? I believe they said that you would have to get a written agreement.
You mean Harris Bank?
I meant Harris, I'm sorry. Is that done?
Well, we have an agreement in concept. We have a surveyor finalizing the plat of re-subdivision, which, or the plat of easement, I'm sorry, which relocates very modestly how the easements were originally designed on the original development plan from Gallow. So we don't, we will not get their final approval until they can actually see the replat of easement, but we've been assured that they, if it's consistent with what we've essentially got a handshake and a conceptual agreement on, that they will sign the plat of easement. Our deal is contingent on that. It doesn't work because our building encroached, I think, a foot and a half or two feet into the old easement areas. So it's incumbent upon the development to get it relocated slightly.
This will be the last and final question for tonight for me on this one. The site, do you have the official license saying that the EPA has cleared that site from all contaminations?
We are minutes away from, or I should say, the gullows are minutes or hours away from getting a no further action letter from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. What that means is that there was an incident reported. They put together a remedial action plan that was submitted and approved by the EPA. They executed that plan, which has been executed, and they believe the site has been cleared. But the last step in that process for the EPA is to issue a no further action letter, which essentially says you've done what you said you were going to do, and as long as there's not another discovery or a new release, that, you know, essentially the property's been cleared. Our deal is contingent on them obtaining that letter. And, you know, we're confident that it's going to come in the next week or two.
Okay, I'll try to call on all of you as I saw the hands first go up. I think Alderman Lewitin actually was going to be next.
Rick, do you pronounce your last name Class?
Clays.
Clays?
Yeah.
I was over there, and I happened to talk to some of the people who live in Bristol Park, and concern that they had, minor concern, it was noise volume. They were complaining to me, whom I talked to, that the BP, which is not in Wooddale, plays their music very loud, or they can hear it come across when it's basically quiet out. They wanted to make, they wanted to know, are you making, are you abiding by some noise regulations so that they don't, they're not watching television and all of a sudden they hear, hey, you and pump four, get back some, what is the noise control for sound that would, that would flow through the air to the Bristol Park area?
Well, this issue actually came up at the ZBA meeting, and what we agreed to was to limit the hours that the outdoor speakers would be used for any marketing or entertainment purposes. And, you know, as I said before, the residents of Bristol Park are going to be our best customers. It's the people that live within walking distance or within a half a mile of the store that, you know, they, they'll visit us three or four times a week. So we go out of our way to keep them happy, make them happy, and keep them happy. So we agreed to an hour restriction. Ross, I'm, I don't recall exactly, was it 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Correct. 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for marketing purposes. After, outside of those time frames, the speakers would be used for emergency purposes only.
The Illinois State Farm Marshal requires self-service gas stations to be able to communicate to the customer at the pump in the event that they have some trouble operating the pump, in the event there's some kind of minor spill or malfunction with the pump. There's a requirement that we have to be able to communicate to the customer at the pump from inside the store. So other for, other than for that purpose, we would limit the use of those speakers after 10 o'clock PM and before 7:00 AM.
Okay. So what is the decimal level, or will it be low enough, your advertisement, that it will only be heard within the area of your land and not be heard across the street on the other side of Devon?
That's essentially our operating practice. If the board wanted to make their approval contingent on our marketing and loudspeaker system not becoming a nuisance to the immediate neighbors, we would be fine with that.
I think that that's where I was getting at, and you agree to it. And Mr. Chairman, if you'll take that into consideration in the final, final passage, I think we're going to be very happy.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Coles.
I've got two questions. Here you say you only have one pump for diesel. One, one, according to this, you've got one pump for diesel.
No, sir, that's not quite correct. There's one designated.
Oh, one designated aisle, then.
There's one designated dispenser, which is two-sided. That is a fast-flow diesel dispenser. So that would accommodate a FedEx truck or somebody that has larger than a 20-gallon capacity tank to pump diesel. In addition to that, we have auto diesel on the four corners of the.
Each pump.
Site plant. And all that is simply is, it's a four-product, multi-product dispenser where you can pick no-lead, mid-grade, super, and diesel, but it's all part of the same pump. So there's, you know, five people, or six people, actually, could be getting diesel on the site at the same time.
See, I've got one other question.
Okay.
Me being in the automotive field, you're building a brand-new station. I think you should put in for charging up batteries on these electric cars. It would be the first one in the area, and something new that you probably haven't thought about.
Well, we actually have that conversation all the time. We were actually talking earlier today, actually down in Louisville, Kentucky, about adding E85, which is really a more current alternative fuel than, you know, electric might be. They're considering the addition of E85 at this location. We're concerned about the ability to accommodate that. You know, while it's certainly a large site, it's just right at an acre. It's, 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 it's an appropriate size for us, but we don't have luxurious room. Some of the other locations we're building next spring, you know, we have 55, 65,000 square feet of land. Here we have, you know, in the low 40,000 square feet-ish, 43,000.
I just thought maybe if you had one, and just try it out.
The problem with the electric is there is no standard specification for providing electric, and until they.
Okay.
Until they agree on a specification, it's going to be an electric cord out of your garage, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, did you ever hand up before? No, then Alderman Shawk is next.
Yeah, just very quickly, staff, is there, there is a difference in the tax from the gasoline as compared to the tax on the groceries, correct?
No. Gasoline in the state of Illinois is charged the same sales tax rate as a pack of gum.
No, what I'm talking about is that I thought the gasoline tax goes into road projects and the other tax would go into the general fund.
The state portion, yes. There is a local, the local sales tax is the local sales tax. There's the state taxes, there's the federal taxes, but there, the motor fuel taxes. But the state of Illinois, for the local portion of sales tax, still charges gasoline as if it were a gallon of milk, or, I'm sorry, not a gallon of milk, a candy bar, a sandwich, things along that nature.
So really, fuel is charged taxes in a couple of different ways. The sale of motor fuel as a retail sale, Ross is absolutely right, it gets charged retail sales tax, just like any other non-grocery, you know, food item out of the store that would be exempt. Then there's an additional cents per gallon tax, which I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is, but it's 20-some cents a gallon. That is a state-mandated tax that goes directly into the road fund for the state of Illinois. They're two separate taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
And so I believe that the municipalities get their share of the road tax based on population, not based on how much volume is pumped in your town, but you do get the benefit of the retail sales tax that's generated from the sale.
Alderman Police.
I heard you said 4.3 million gallons of gas and 3.4 million dollars in sales that's in the store itself, right?
3.3 in the store, yeah.
Okay. My question is, do you know your projections as far as sales tax revenue on this? Because I guess this is coming up, this agreement or possible agreement.
Yeah, so what I represented in the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is we believe that the taxes generated from this unit will be at least $125,000 a year and probably more. We did an extensive revenue generation study that was done by the former village manager in the village of Schaumburg, who now is a consultant that does these things, for a project we're working on up in the village of Lakemore. That location, we were generating 119,000 of tax revenue for the village of Lakemore, and then some other taxes that added up to a total of about 124,000 in local taxes. Our projected revenue at this location is substantially higher than the one in Lakemore. So I think it's at least $125,000 a year.
Okay. And in regards to the liquor license, I guess we don't have one to give right now, but we'd have to make a new one. It was brought to my attention that another station had requested one or was asking. We told them no, they didn't follow through. So when voting for this, we've got to think that probably going to have a couple more come forward. Give it to one, you have to give it to everybody else.
You do have some in town that have them, though. I know.
I have no problem with the liquor license. All we have to do is add one.
Right.
You know, it's just.
I know specifically the mobile at Addison and Irving has one, I think, as part of their redevelopment.
Okay, yeah, I have no problem. I just, I heard somebody was kind of turned away, and I'm sure they're going to be back, so that's all.
Okay, if there's no other, oh, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have one question. Do you have a picture of a sign in your, your sign here?
Well, what's shown on the rendering there is pretty accurate. I know it's kind of hard to see, but.
What is going into the brick area here, the center of it?
On that particular location, that actually is a rendering of a site we built in Nashville, Tennessee, and it was a welcome to the city of.
Wooddale?
Whatever. It could be that.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
If you'd like it to be.
There's a Wooddale in Nashville? Okay, all right. If there's any other questions?
I would make that a stipulation of your approval, by the way, just so I don't get in trouble.
It's ready here. Alderman Winger.
I'm actually on the fence on this project itself, and, you know, I'd like to see something a little more, you know, residential-friendly. However, I understand that you're looking for some type of incentive to do this as well, so I believe we should understand that, and I didn't hear the particulars. If we're going to vote on this, I should at least understand what it is that you are asking for.
Mr. Douthwait, do you want to address that?
We met with the developer on Monday, August 3, and at the time discussed the idea of some sort of a sales tax incentive. I requested that they put some sort of a proposal in writing that staff could respond to and negotiate off of prior to coming to the council. We received that initial proposal late this afternoon. I've only had a chance to look at it for about five minutes, so I guess I'd have a couple comments. Number one, I certainly would not want to negotiate that incentive agreement on the floor of the council. Number two, based upon some incentive agreements I've negotiated in the past, typically what happens is that there's a certain threshold whereby the city retains a certain amount of money 100%. Anything above that to a certain ceiling is shared, and anything above that, reverse 100% to the city. My initial hit out of the box with respect to Mr. Clay's letter today was that it's an opening salvo, if you will, for the purposes of starting negotiations. The, in my opinion, the floor, the threshold is too low, the ceiling's too high, and the length of the incentive agreement is too long. And I would like to have some time to negotiate with these folks and bring back something to you that, that the staff can live with. I'd also want some opportunity to talk to you all individually about some of the specifics to get an idea of what you can live with, because right now I don't have any sense from the council in terms of what you might be able to live with. We can't talk about that in executive session. I certainly don't want to talk about it tonight. I would suggest that if you want to go forward with this, that you make any motion to approve subject to and contingent upon an incentive agreement that we can negotiate that's acceptable to you all.
Is there anything else before I make a motion? Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the special use subject to and contingent on a future agreement of said financial agreement, financial incentive by all parties. Also, subject to Alderman Lewitin's concern about ensuring a lack of a noise nuisance to the residential neighbors. Also contingent on Alderman Wesley's dynamic request for a City of Wooddale sign to be located on the Thornton sign. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Wesley?
The only thing that I would add in that, if you don't mind whoever might second it, that all clean documents is forward to the council, forward to the Building Department before building permits are released to this project, that we do know that it's a cleared site. I just want to make.
From the Illinois EPA?
Right. I want, right. No further action from the EPA that they don't have to do anymore.
I, I accept that as a contingency, does the second.
I agree.
Okay. And if nothing else on the question, I would like a roll call, please.
Alderman Shawkie?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item, Mr. John Forrest, will be discussing a report and recommendation. He is going to be presenting a few recent change orders to the Metro Station project.
I think the motion will be approved.
So John, anytime you're ready, we are.
Mr. Chairman, are those ready, Ross? I just wanted to, all right, just, actually, Ross and I were out at the train station project this morning and took a couple of photos. We just wanted to quickly run those past you, if some of you haven't had the opportunity to get out there and see how the work is progressing. We just thought it might be interesting for you to see. We can start with these while, okay, while we're waiting for the computer to reboot, I guess we can start the discussion on this. I will keep it short. I tried to explain in my memo the reasons for these change orders. I think it's important that you understand this type of a project, when the plans are prepared, when the estimates are done, and the bids are done, certain scopes of work for this type of a project, at a certain point are sort of best guesstimates and educated assumptions after reviewing the existing conditions out there. The problem that we ran into out there for change order number two, which talks about a field change in the water service location, is that entire site is just a spider web of different types of utilities. When Julie goes out to mark a site where you see that Julie line, they're allowed to be 18 inches either way of where the actual utility is. Now, to do the water and sewer lines out there, they did a process that's called directional boring, which means they actually have a machine that actually pushes the pipes underground and ends up at the intended destination if they're lucky. Unfortunately, with the water and sewer services, they did run into some utility lines where they weren't quite expecting them, so they did have to relocate the water service, which resulted in an additional 80 feet of pipe that was put in. That was change order number two. Change order number three is for the installation of a handicapped accessible and a regularly accessible drinking fountain. This change is a result of further discussion between staff and the architect, and the thing is that the use group of a train station can sort of be massaged a couple of different ways. It can be considered an unoccupied utility building, or it could be considered an assembly building for public to congregate in, a public building, I'm sorry. So initially, we left the drinking fountain out, basically as a cost-saving measure, but in going back and revisiting the plans and talking to another plumbing consultant that reviewed the plans, they felt that. reviewed the plans, they felt that when push came to shove, the Illinois State Plumbing Code could require that we put a drinking fountain in there. We're putting the bathrooms in, we're having the coffee service, so at this point, it's much easier, much more cost-effective to just have the drinking fountain put in. The one that's been chosen aesthetically goes with the design of the interior of the station. It's designed by the manufacturer to be as vandal-proof as, as a fixture can be, complies to all the handicap accessibility requirements, and it also is, the way the surfaces are contoured, it's much easier to keep clean, and we don't have to worry about the growth This change order includes the electrical costs involved in this, the plumbing, and then the actual fixture, which if you saw the attachment, it's actually two drinking fountains. There's one at regular height, and then there's one at handicapped height. Change order number four is resulting in the change of direction of the sanitary sewer installation, and again, this deals with the original layout of that, had the sanitary sewer system running along the north part of the property, actually going underneath the platform between the station and the tracks. When we relocated the water line, we were then able to pull that sanitary sewer line south, which was preferred by Metro, to get that off of that small section between the station and the tracks. And we're now entering the building on the west end of the building as opposed to the northeast corner of the building, while what that necessitated was additional plumbing work on the interior of their building to connect those pipes up. I did sort of give us a running total, even with these, these change orders, we are still operating below the approved amount for the train station. Are we ready for the photos? Okay. And now for your viewing pleasure. Popcorn is on the way, yes. Okay, this is the view from standing over by where the temporary trailer is right now. Next slide. Next slide.
That has to be today, because I didn't see the
That's today, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the, the outside covered waiting area on the east end of the station. I just wanted to give you an idea of what it's going to look like with this tongue-in-groove ceiling and the exposed beams. Next. Just another angle. Next. It's the interior, looking from the east end, what you see on the left, those plywood walls, those are the walls that are framed out for the bathroom, for both bathrooms, I'm sorry, and then where the horses are set up, that's going to be sort of the main entrance lobby where you come through. The framed-up wall behind that is going to be the coffee service area, and then all the way to the back where that yellow ladder is, that's actually the two-story area that's also going to be waiting area. Next. This is an interior view of the ceiling, again, just to give you an idea of what it's going to look like with the exposed beams and the tongue-in-groove ceiling. That one we left in there, although we probably could have taken it out. That's looking in the west, and that's looking in that door towards the two-story tower. Next, and this is the view from Christie's parking lot, which is sort of reflects the view of the initial artist's rendering that we saw and all fell in love with and approved a year ago. That's it, thank you. So, it is moving along, it's, you know, again, it's, I know everybody was concerned initially because it seemed like it was going very slowly, but that's because that phase of the project was all the underground utility works, and I think we've already gone over some of the issues that came up with that earlier. Do you have any other questions?
Brilliant idea, brilliant idea, showing the pictures and getting us all excited as we're about to approve the change orders, hopefully.
Thank you.
Couple of questions that I've been asked, you know, is our, what does, as of the progress today, what's your best guess at completion? Are you still staying with Christmas? Do you think we're doing better than that?
I will know better tomorrow. My plan is to go over to the site tomorrow morning, have a, have a weekly get-together with the superintendent over there, get the latest information, and then I will put that in a memo that'll be in your packet next week for your information about the update.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then I will make a motion to approve change orders numbers two, three, and four for the Metro Station reconstruction project. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Items to be considered at future meetings, we have the Land Vision Unified Development Ordinance should be on our desks for discussion in October, unless Mr. Clicker has anything to add to that. That's all I have for future items. And then I will go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None? None opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I'm calling an order, the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Will the minutaker please call the roll?
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Cadella?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated August 27, 2009. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, is the report and recommendation of the fiscal year ending in '09, a budget amendment, and this is essentially a housecleaning effort, and we do have the recap of the amendments that came to us, and there are four amendments requested, one given the Economic Development Fund, and I would say the highlight is, is that some of, the majority of that is the work that took place regarding the Thorndale corridor study, which actually, a bulk of it did take place in '08, '09, so it needs to be captured in that budget. Sanitation fund, a majority of this amendment is due to when we did have the storm and all of the containers that did need to be placed in Wooddale to help clean up the effort. So, so that's a portion of this amendment, and there are two additional amendments. Third is IT fund, and when I reviewed this, we did considerably go over our budgeted amount, and on this one, my, my request to the administration is, if we're running that far over the budget in a given year, and, and correct me if I am wrong, but please let us know that we're approaching such an overrun and, and incidence, because this is almost half of what the budget was. But I am prepared to approve it, and, and it's, as far as I understand, there are all necessities that had to take place. And lastly, the land acquisition fund. So, I'm going to make a motion, look for a second, and then I'll call the question. So, I make a motion to approve the four amendments as stated in, in this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a discussion on the format of financial reports, and with this, the Vice Chair of Finance and Administration did ask that we discuss this, so I'm going to ask, Alderman Police, would you like to take us through some of the highlights that you see as, that could benefit us going forward if we made the changes?
Actually, I met with Brad just before the meeting and went over his three, three different alternatives. Number one, I thought was very minimal, and I'm sure everybody would like a little more information. The second one, I found to be, as far as the revenue analysis, gave a little more information. Basically, the same amount of pages as the other one, but it's, it's a, I believe, a quicker and easier format to read than the original. As far as the expenditures, we were kind of having a conversation on that between number two and number three. Brad, you want to say anything to that? Any, is there anything better between two or three?
As we discussed earlier, the only major difference between two and three is option two is by class, by department, where option three is by class, by fund. So, option three doesn't give you a snapshot of, you know, where administration's at, where finance department's at, where legal's at, just gives you a snapshot of the fund overall, where option two does go through and show you what each department is on a more condensed basis. So, it depends on if you want to look at it by department or by fund. That's kind of your call at that point.
Can I continue?
Please continue.
Basically, I just brought this up because the ones we normally get monthly, sometimes, you know, they get a little lengthy and whatnot. I felt if we had a quicker snapshot, I personally liked option two, but I did talk to Brad saying maybe that three times a year, we get the full-blown one, and then also, I asked if we could add on the bottom of these reports what, where we stand as far as the reserves, so we know where the reserve stands on a monthly basis. If all of a sudden, it's, you know, 50 percent, next month, it's 25 percent, I'd like to know right away why we went down 25 percent. But I was just looking for something a little simpler to read and something we can look at, that's all.
Okay, so, so the changes that I believe are proposed, are they labor, are they at all labor intents to implement those changes?
As I explained to Alderman Police earlier, to produce anything aside from the options you currently receive, I have to produce those reports anyways, and then dump them into Excel, and then just effectively hide cells, so it takes a couple of minutes, but, I mean, you know, nothing too, too exciting. Or too hard.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Ma'am Chairman, the only thing that I am, you know, I, I could go either way, but I still would like my options to get the one that we get all the time, because I did go through that last one, and we did find some errors on that of money that was earmarked in wrong accounts that needs to go back into the other account. So, I would still ask if, if there's a possibility that if we choose to go the other format, are the Alderman could have the other option to pick up a copy of the one that we get now to oversee that options? I did, I'll be totally honest with you, I do go through it, okay? And I did meet with Brad on a couple accounts that was over the count, and they removed from one account to the other account, which never should happen. Not that I don't trust the finance department, I just think, I still would like the other option, but if you guys choose go the one option, I will still be asking the original.
I'm going to require the existing option every month anyway. I tend to be a little anal retentive with regard to some of these numbers, so Brad's going to have to generate a copy for me anyway, and it's no big deal to copy them a couple more times. Whatever your, if that's what you want, we can make that work.
Well, you know, I, I would.
And anybody else who wants to, the full-blown, just let Brad know, and we'll make detailed copies for you.
So, I want to interject that, in being a tree lover, that if, if everyone is okay with the existing reports, and maybe Alderman Police would just prefer a different type of report, then perhaps we can email that report to Alderman Police. So, I need to hear from other Aldermen on what your preference is, because then, you know, and, and I believe our finance director is going to work with us to, to suit our needs, so I just want to hear what we in fact do want. Alderman Police?
I'm fine with the original one. The only reason I was asking is something a little simpler, a little quicker, you know, but I go through it as well, so it doesn't bother me. I mean, it just, I mean, it only take maybe an extra 15 minutes from one to the other, so I don't care. I was just tossing it out there as an alternative, that's all.
Other, I'm just going to go down, down the dais here. Alderman, our Wesley, any comments either way?
No.
Okay. Alderman Coles?
Why don't you leave it just the way it was before? Simple as that. We all read them.
Right. Alderman Cadella, any comments, questions?
Either way is okay, but the original one, I think, has pertinent information that we probably should be seeing.
Okay, and I know how Alderman Eugene Wesley stated. Alderman Dan Shockey?
Long with the crowd.
Okay, so we all want the original report, and perhaps, how about the chairman and vice chairman have an extra summary? Can you throw, throw it in our packets? Is that okay? Or email it to us? Either way, whatever's easier for you.
What, what sort of extra summary would you be looking for?
What Alderman Police is requesting?
The one I requested was more of a snapshot, it was simpler format. The one we originally get is more, more intense, so that's fine, I mean, I could live with that. I would, I'd just put it out there in case, you know, if anyone's having trouble looking at all those numbers.
I was calling it a summary, but I can call it a snapshot, too. I mean, do you want that snapshot in email?
No, if, no, I don't want anything special, just same for everybody, that's fine. That's fine. Sorry.
Okay, so, so I, I believe the consensus is to just leave it as it is.
Leave it alone.